Called a meeting to order, the Georgetown City Council. Will you please rise for a moment of silence and then Mr. Penn will lead us in, in the pledge.
Silence please. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you sir. Now clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Leslie? Mr. McEwen? Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Single Sign?
Here.
Mr. Showalter? Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
We do have a quorum, ever so slightly, but we still have a quorum. Okay, our next order of business is to approve the, uh, the minutes of our last meeting.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion, Madam Tackett.
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Show of hands that you did receive your check register this time? Thank you. Public comment, and we have one. Ms. Lloyd? Welcome.
Uh, I want to call upon you all to host a party on the square. I don't know if you all realize it or not, but on, um, July the 26th, we had some rain in the afternoon and our band decided that they did not feel comfortable setting up their equip- equipment. Um, it ended up being a beautiful night, so we were all disappointed, but we would like to reschedule for September the 13th. I have already submitted a request to Tracy. I got the transportation cabinet's approval, uh, for Main Street, back today from them, so I can give that to you tonight. We would do the same thing that we've always done, close down Court Square at two, uh, then at three o'clock, set the stage, and then the band would start performing at about, um, eight o'clock. Now, in the past, what we've done, which we would stay the same, is if the crowd is very large, then we would move over onto Main Street, but that would only be after seven PM, when all of the stores are closed, and that would be with police assistance and with them making the call as to whether or not we need to broaden out of Courthouse Square. So, I'm just asking for permission to have it on the September the 13th.
Motion, Mayor. How do you handle that with the state if we, do you fill out paperwork prior to that in case we do have to block Main Street off, or?
It is, I have filled out with Tracy, I've given her, like, uh, you know, you all have an event application. So, I fill it out, and it says the times that we expect. But if the police should deem that we needed to close down, uh, Main Street, then they would have the authority through the transportation cabinet. And I go ahead and submit them all at one time.
Okay.
But because we had to do the September 13th, I felt like we needed to do an additional with them. Um, not just change the date, but actually send in an official request to the State Highway Department too.
So, Lloyd, what time does it start?
The concert starts at eight.
Eight, okay.
Thank you. If you all come down, Mayor Barney's always there.
Thank you for all you do downtown. I'm telling you, it's, it's, it's a blast down here, a great turnout, and, and the people genuinely have a great time down there.
I don't know if all of you all have been down there. I know the mayor's down there every time.
Oh yes, I enjoy it.
But we have anywhere from three hundred and fifty to, there's been a couple nights we've had five hundred. So, that's pretty amazing. So far, we have not had to close Main Street. We've been able to contain it with inside the square. That means that they go down the alleys a little bit. Um, and of course, we always appreciate police assistance. They've always got, uh, three men in uniform, four, and Public Works is there the whole evening to assist us. So, we so appreciate all you all do for us, because without your all's help, we wouldn't have the concert series, so.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Looking forward to it.
See you there.
All right.
Mayor Barney?
Yes?
Tracy, did Chris Real Heart give you a, um, thing for the Salvation Army 5K race, that he filed out papers for that? Because I was supposed to bring that up tonight. He told me he had.
When is the 5K?
He just told me to bring it up tonight.
You've done a great job.
I know, I brought it up, didn't I? I know, and I know that, that he said that, uh, you had the insurance, the whole papers worked, everything. He just filled it all out and sent it.
It's in September.
Yeah, it's in September, I know that.
Would you all like to approve that?
That's what I'm asking you in.
Paperwork.
Condition is same things, everything's fine, and that we're, we go through the same route, motion for that, yes sir.
My second.
Second from Mr. Penn. Any further comments, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you Marvin. Okay. Next is the mayor's comments. First order of business is a proclamation for our local airport. You have that?
Whereas the city of Georgetown and the state of Kentucky has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and local airports include Georgetown Scott County Airport have an immense economic impact on the city of Georgetown. And whereas Kentucky is home to fifty-nine airports that serve more than six thousand five hundred pilots and two thousand eighty-two active general aviation aircraft. And whereas the state is home to thirty-seven repair stations and five FAA-approved pilot schools, nine hundred and eighty-one student pilots, and one thousand one hundred and seven flight instructors. And whereas general aviation contributes an annual economic impact of more than one point seven billion to Kentucky economy, and Kentucky airports support nearly a hundred and fifteen thousand jobs. And whereas general aviation not only supports Kentucky's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, disaster relief, and transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and congressional oversight should be in place to ensure stable funding of this system. Therefore, I, effort, Barney, Mayor of Georgetown, do hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the city of Georgetown and declare August to be General Aviation Appreciation Month. Signed this date, August eleventh, twenty fourteen.
Mr. Thomas? You please come forward, please. Mr. Martin Thomas is on the airport board. Appreciate you being here and appreciate all, all you guys do out there. I've always said, that probably is the best kept secret in Scott County. Tremendous airport. Continued good work. I had the honor, last week, of welcoming a new police officer to our force, Officer Thomas Enrico Junior. And, uh, he comes to us from the University of Kentucky, and he's, uh, he's ready to hit the street as soon as he gets a little, uh, training behind him as to how we do things here in, in Georgetown. So, we welcome him aboard. Okay, next, I'd like to announce that, uh, city has, has been removing some condemned structures. Uh, last week, we, we took down one up on, uh, North Hamilton. These are burned-out structures that, uh, well, partially burned out, that have been condemned and need to come down. And this is just the beginning of, of what we're going to accomplish. We, we're going to put a committee together and, and, uh, look at the, the condemned or, or the condition of the buildings in, in some of our neighborhoods, and, uh, get active about taking those downs. So, very happy to announce that we did take two down, uh, this past week. City Attorney?
Mayor, could I comment?
You certainly may.
For the record, uh, Salvation Army 5K is Saturday, September twenty-seventh, begins at nine.
AM?
Yes.
Good deal.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for the, and thank you for the condemned structure.
And thank you for your, for your email comment.
Yes, glad to drive up Bourbon Street to see the progress of the police department and the area around it.
It is coming.
Pretty awesome.
That is wonderful.
Been beautified.
Okay, first reading of an ordinance adopting the two thousand and twelve fire code.
An ordinance adopting the two thousand and twelve NFPA fire safety and life safety codes. Summary, one, amend section seven dash sixteen, seven dash seventeen, and seven dash eighteen of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to update the NFPA fire code and life safety codes from the two thousand and six version to the two thousand and twelve version. Two, provides for several guilty of provisions and effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time, August eleventh, twenty fourteen.
Okay, first reading. We'll have a second reading at our next meeting. First reading of the gas franchise ordinance.
An ordinance providing for bids for a gas franchise. Summary, one, establishes forbid a non-exclusive gas franchise for the placement of facilities for the transmission, distribution, and sale of gas for heating and other purposes within the public rights of way of the city of Georgetown for an initial ten-year period, and with up to two additional extensions of time of five years each. Set for the terms and conditions by which franchisees must operate within the city, including construction standards, installation procedures, performance guarantees, regulatory compliance, liability insurance, and access to franchisees' records. Three, establishes conditions on franchisees' assignments of franchise and public sale of company assets. Four, establishes penalties for failure to comply with provisions of the ordinance and establishes circumstances under which the city may terminate the franchise. Five, establishes the conditions under which the franchisee may terminate the franchise. Six, reserves the right of the city to impose by subsequent ordinance a franchise fee of up to five percent of gross revenues of each franchisee's gross annual revenue from the sale, distribution, and delivery of gas within the city of Georgetown with ninety days' notice to the franchisee. No sooner than one year after a franchise agreement is executed and establishes the terms under which the franchise fee would be collected. Seven, provides for governance by state law, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Introduced and publicly read the first time, August eleventh, twenty fourteen.
Okay, this is the first reading, and we do have Ms. Linda Aine here with us, if you.
And also Mr. Herb Miller from Columbia Gas. This will be the time for you all to ask.
We welcome both of you.
Questions?
Sounds like a good order.
All right.
All right. Thank you for being here, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, city engineer? Municipal order approving bid for Derby Estates.
Evening Mayor, Council. Um, last week, we received bids for the Derby Estates stormwater issue we've been hearing about. Uh, we received bids from five companies, and the selection committee selected ECSI. Just one thing to point out, uh, the proposal is attached in the packet. Uh, this includes, this includes two issues that we have in the Derby Estates subdivision. Not only the, the stormwater issue that you all are very familiar with, but there's also another culvert that has a wing wall that's falling. And that is also included in this, uh, project. The design cost for this project is just under thirty-five thousand dollars, with fourteen thousand dollars for as-built and, uh, construction oversight. Uh, Fred Eastrich from ECSI is, is here, if you all have any questions. But I think, once we get through finding out what the problem is, how it was caused, we can determine, uh, the best method on fixing the problem and then how to fund it. Andrew, myself, Brent Combs, and Stacy.
Is this a low bid?
No, this is qualifications.
Motion, Mayor?
Yes, we do.
Motion.
So, so it's that culvert there at the end of South Pole Forbes?
Well, there, there's two, there's two drainage paths, two main drainage paths through Derby Estates. There's the one, uh, that's having the issues from the bypass. That's between Tim Tam and Donnerail. The other culvert issue, that's more of a swell issue. The culvert issue is over, uh, between Secretariat and.
Okay. As you're turning on to South Pole Forbes, you go over that kind of culvert.
It's, it's an eight to ten-foot modular block wing wall that's undercut, and it's getting ready to fall.
It's pretty close to the road collapsing over it.
Very close to the road.
We've had that happen in Colony. Were you here when that happened? I think that was Eric.
Any other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council.
All right.
I forgot to mention on the ordinance, uh, there was a last-minute addition, section five B, uh, about emergency street cuts. We have that copy here if anybody wants it.
I just say, uh, I think Kyle already leave. Wow, he's fast.
Uh, I'll just say though, I mean, I've been up there a couple of times. Um, it looks like, uh, they probably put that street on, after the main part, when they realized they had enough land to put that Tim Tam on. And, um, so the issue is kind of where the, the stormwater seems to be going through people's backyards there. I mean, literally, in an area where they had built up, created backyards for people, and then the water's coming down, so. I'll just say, you know, whatever solution they find to be doable, it's probably gonna cost a lot, and it's gonna be a lot of work.
Well, we're gonna check with the state.
It could be something underground even, you know, running up.
Check with them and see if there's any help available there.
All right. No, no.
We answered it without you, Kyle.
I had a question about Finland, but never mind, you're long gone.
Chief Bossy, give us an update on what's going on with the police department.
Uh, Officer Enrico should be ready in four weeks. We just saw him in early in the week, so. And, uh, if you follow the Facebook, you saw where we solved, or our detectives solved, the robbery there on Showalter. So, that was just good police work on, on their part. Um, we have a really good, uh, solvability factor on our robberies since here. And, and that's because they stay on it, and they're pretty tenacious about it, so. And everything else is going pretty smoothly.
Good report. Glad to hear it.
Mayor, I make a motion to go enter into executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight one O B to discuss the acquisition and sale of real property.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we are back in regular session. Council comments?
Are we gonna wait on Tracy to come back?
She gone home, didn't she?
She's gone.
Could not be.
She's got a right.
Let's see who.
Here she comes, here it's.
Who we have, Brad?
Ms. Hoffman, we're waiting on you now.
Well, you, did you second?
Ms. Hoffman, Ms. Hoffman, come on up.
You're up, you're up.
She don't go too far.
Right. No action taken?
Okay, I'll call Chris.
Brad did first.
First by Ken?
Yes. No action taken?
Brad did first, I did second, and going back into.
Okay, council comments?
I do.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on some of the things that was on our minutes the last time, was the slats on the grate at Oak Street that Mark had brought up. Has that been taken care of?
Just being attentive.
Okay.
Proper people will notify.
It was an unbudgeted item. There's a lot of grates over there like that. I think Linda's having someone go out and count them up. Um, try and find a standard grate to replace them, and come up with a cost.
Can we have something on that the next time we come into?
I can email it, yeah.
Try?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, that'd be good. And what about the sidewalk at the corner of North Hamilton?
They failed, uh, to meet the deadline, so we have to hire someone to go out and do it.
Okay.
But it is going to be repaired.
All right. I'll ask for that update again in two weeks. And the Willow Lane project?
Supposed to be completed the end of this week.
Okay.
Fifteenth, remember? That's what a date I gave you when I announced it.
Yeah, they're at the very end of it.
Yeah, I drove over there today. Pipes in the ground, they just gotta tidy up the.
Clean up.
Yeah.
Okay, I was trying to keep it to the forefront.
Absolutely.
Leave it all at where we do, okay. And then we got the RFP on the Derby Estates. That's all I. That's all I had to make.
I have a question, since Kyle's... What about, I got your email on what I had asked about, about Thorndale, about the no parking signs on this?
That's on our agenda tomorrow.
Okay. And you had sent an email to me and said for Brent, but I have an email in response from Eric.
I actually spoke with Mark Hamel.
Okay.
Those will be going in.
Okay, great, great.
Not sure when, but they'll be going in.
Well, then I'll, I'll, you're like Connie, two weeks, I'll ask when.
Might want to call Mark, because he probably knows better.
One other thing.
With Mark.
One other thing, Kyle.
No, they'll stay up right to the finish.
Kyle, pull up a chair, buddy.
Just one more thing. We talked a few weeks ago about sidewalks, about perhaps starting up a program where we would do, where we used to, I think, do 50/50 or something along those lines.
Had a 50/50 program.
Yeah, can we look into, not only the 50/50 program, but also look into what the standards are for sidewalks, and maybe the grading system as far as, you know, the worst, so that if we started that system back up, we'd go after the worst sidewalks first, you know, try to encourage, not go after, but try to encourage people with maybe the sidewalks in the most damaged or poor condition to try to get them to fix them first, or target the city's money a little better?
We can, there's just going to be a lot of legwork tracking every sidewalk in the city to get a listing of.
Well, there's some ones that are, you know, here, like with the one in Colony.
Even Southham.
Well, there's some, yeah, there's some here and there, that are, you know, in just kind of bad shape. We've got a lot of joggers now.
Yeah.
Just a general comment, if you see a sidewalk that's damaged and strip hazard, call code enforcement. They're going to start ticketing.
We, we may be able to implore our...
Oh, boy.
HDI director to invent, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's what I meant. And have him look at the, at least the ones in his territory. Coordinate that with...
That'd be the main, those are the main problems.
That'd be awesome if he would do that.
Yeah.
Would you?
That's a good idea.
I think we should ask him.
Would you do that? Give us a report back on that.
In two weeks.
Keep it forefront.
We covered some of that during our annual design audit as well, but I can go back and look more closely at specifically the sidewalk issue and the miles in the court.
It's not just an issue of going out and ticketing people, it's saying, you know, we're willing to go 50/50 on this piece with you that we found is a problem. Would you be interested in fixing the sidewalk?
I agree.
Because it helps value your house a lot.
Absolutely. To get that type, type of database together is a lot of legwork, and I still have to do the paving and sign index.
And you're liable for any accidents on the sidewalk in front of your house, too. Certainly, legal, people would certainly check that out to see if possibly the condition of the sidewalk led to the accident.
I fell on a brick out here. It was pretty funny. I do have one more thing, if you got a minute. I was grateful.
Yeah.
Any other comment?
I do.
That brick, that brick jarred her memory.
I just want to acknowledge and maybe find out the letter that we got from, from the judge, Lesby, about the ambulances and stuff. I just wanted to acknowledge that and ask Stacy, because he, according to the interlocal agreement, he's just given this information. I just wanted to acknowledge it, that do we have the money and the budget for that?
I think my understanding from the letter, I'll go back and reread. I thought, he said they would attempt to cover...
They are.
Within their budgetary line items, and I guess we'll probably get another notice if they can't. So, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, and I'll keep in communication with him. But I think the hope would be that they can cover it within the line item as it is.
We got another letter from this morning. I don't know if you knew that or not, but basically...
I think Arlene emailed that out today.
Yeah. The only, only update was...
It was on the SUV.
Go back, and they, the insurance company had the wrong information on the car, so they had to get another $23,000 in insurance proceeds.
Yeah.
It, it again, it said the same thing about trying to cover it within the line item, so.
Yeah.
At this time, I don't know how much more they might need, so I can't comment too much of them to say they're trying to...
I just wanted to acknowledge it.
Yes.
But yes, yes.
We have to keep our ambulances rolling. There's no question about that.
So, if I get any further information from him about possibly needing to increase the line item, I will certainly bring that to you if he hasn't already sent us an MO about it, but...
What do you want, and my only thought in reading both of, both the letters was would he want, or would the city entertain the difference rather than the split? Because in both, in both cases, it was, it seemed like they had 100,000, 120,000 budgeted, but is going to be 20,000 to 30,000 more than budgeted. So, I know he's giving us this for, for information and discussion, but is that an interest in us making up the difference or a split? It's just a possibility or an offer on, on our end, we could extend it to the county.
Well, we're responsible 50% of it, that's for sure.
Is it going to go outside our budget lines, our individual level of budget control on that ambulance service?
If, I'm sorry?
Is it going to go above that budget line for the ambulance service within our own budget, you think?
For the new vehicle?
For the new vehicle.
I'll have to go back and look at that, because I, I thought he said he was trying to cover it within the budget. Maybe I misunderstood.
Well, I know, that's what he said in the letter, but I just was asking you, in your opinion, do you think we're going to be able to contain that within the...
But you can look at it.
I mean, as far as whether or not we're going to go outside of the ambulance budget line item that we have, really, the judge would know that better than I would, in the sense that he's got a day-to-day handle on those expenses. But I can take a look at it and see how, I mean, we're only one month in, so it's hard to judge how we are for the year. But I can keep an eye on that and certainly update you. But being one month in, it's hard to tell how we're tracking over or under on the budget.
And one more thing. On the sanitation budget?
Yes.
Where we're going to buy another truck?
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to go over that budget, that sanitation budget for the year, are we? We're going into this fiscal year.
No, we had that contingency amount of $3,000, and that's where we pulled the amount for the truck and the remainder of the forklift.
Okay.
See, we actually had a truck in, in the proposed budget that you eliminate, so we had, we had the funding mandate.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
And again, those are all in the sanitation environmental services fund, which is where they ultimately have to be spent.
Okay.
Or left, one or the other.
Yes.
Any other comment?
Yes.
Jesse?
I know we probably don't want to discuss this, but as far as the investigation that was just presented to us, are we, where are we at with that? I mean, are we, I mean, is that, have we, I know I came in a few minutes late tonight, so I don't know if that's been discussed, or if it's where it is, or if it's in our hands, or...
Yeah, I mean, I await your input as to what to do next.
We don't feel that the right people were contacted. We don't think he went deep enough. We ask him to do what the council instructed us to do.
So, are you going to present, are you going to officially present it to the council for council's approval of the recommendation or approval of the document?
Which direction that would take.
I mean, it's the, council asked for the report, and the council's been presented with the report, and now the council can...
Is it officially been, I mean, I know it's been emailed to everybody, so is that officially, does that mean it's officially been presented to us?
In, in his mind, it's official right now.
Yes, that's the way I read it.
Whether it's final or not, it's the council's decision.
I just don't know how you can have an investigation of a subject, and it's a definite investigation, are they sitting council member, and not interview the council member. I mean, I don't get that...
I agree.
In a million years. And if it came up for a vote tonight, as far as, and we've done this before, accept reports, and there's stuff in the reports I don't agree with, or the direction that the report wants us to go, but I'll vote for it anyway. But in this case, I can vote to accept this report, simply because not only the fact that it was written on a sophomore level, not only the fact that it not go, not have a breadth of investigation that I thought the rest of council wanted, not necessarily me, but the fact that it didn't interview the guy that was being investigated. I don't know. It, it's, it's surreal. I don't know, so that's my, that's my two cents.
unfinished document.
It's not a finished document.
There's nothing there, there's nothing there.
I agree. You know, we, from the get-go, though, we decided that we were going to be merely a, in the mayor's office, a pass-through between the council's wishes and the investigator. And I, you know, I, I take all the feelings that I have about it as a, as an attorney and a professional, and I got to kind of put those aside. Now, I can, I can counsel you all, of course, but I'm not going to interject what I think is a good investigation or is not an investigation without you all's input, so I mean...
Did you even tell him to, did, did he even look at the tape the night that we talked about it, do you?
I don't know. I, I mean, I gave him what he asked for, and...
Well, how did he know what to do if he didn't, if you didn't give him, if the mayor's office didn't give him some kind of direction, or he didn't listen to the conversation from the city council meeting, how did he know what to do?
He has your MO, which is your written instructions for the investigation.
It was passed on to him, and other, other lawyers were, were contacted to, to get a recommendation. We were turned down on several fronts because of the price. So, we'll wait to, whatever direction you want us to go now.
What'd that cost us?
Frasier.
The email, I can't remember what the amount was, but I think it was a couple thousand or something. It certainly wasn't what the council authorized.
Did you get that number, Stacy?
I think you got that number.
I think it was in answer to Mark's inquiry. I think there's a number on it.
Yeah, I forwarded, I forwarded his response to the council, which had that amount in it. I don't have it in front of me. My recollection is it was under $2,000.
Yes, it was.
Listen, it wasn't a private citizen, it wasn't like just a standard city, you know, city employee. It was a director, a department head, made the accusation that a council member tried to intimidate her into being less than truthful before council. And I think that was worth looking into, and certainly look, worth getting an independent investigator, attorney, council, whatever, to look into it, to kind of take the politics out and take, and go outside the community to get a fresh look at it, to answer the question, what happened? The problem in this case is that he didn't do it. He didn't, I don't see how you can make an investigation of this, especially when we're dealing with intent of the email conversations that weren't memorialized or recorded. I don't see how you can do it without talking to the council member himself, and at least getting his side of the story. And, you know, it's a brief document, it's about four pages, so, with, with a lot of padding, and I just don't think it went anywhere. I mean, I, I don't think there's anything that's been settled.
Well, we don't either. That's the feeling we have here in City Hall, certainly Andrew and myself. We'll, we'll wait any directions you have.
I think you probably need to formally present it to the council instead of send it through an email. If you want to put it on the agenda and then put it, put it on there for the council to either vote to accept it, or not to accept it, or vote with sending it back for additional information or something like that. I think probably give it to us in a formal, formal setting, in a formal situation, and put it on for discussion.
Would do.
And do that.
Yes.
Can be done.
Anything else? Any other comments?
Was there a discussion on the, on the houses that have burned in the, in the area that may be condemned? The one at the corner of Main Avenue and Chambers, is that on the list?
On the corner, on Main Avenue, on the corner?
Yeah, good work on that. I know we've said it before, but really good work. Just keep it up.
Well, there's some others we're going to, we're going to check out for sure.
Helps the neighborhood affair a lot, my neighborhood.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Have an umbrella.
But today, I drove right here. Launch in the car.
Yeah.
Right now, I will have to look, but it may not be at the stage where we can give it to you yet. Check it out. As you heard the council say, they're not sure whether the report is final or not.
And you basically heard the contents of it.